Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Steve Urbana Council Committee of the Whole. Could the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox.
Here.
Mr. Garrick.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
I'm here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda or staff report? We do have one change due to some PC and Mac incompatibility issues. We're going to move the website and marketing update down to after item number 11 on the agenda and hopefully get things resolved. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from previous meetings from July 27, 2009, and August 3, 2009.
May I make a motion for approval of those minutes?
Second. All ayes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, those are approved. We have one request for public input at this time. Mr. Brian Dolinar, and he'd like to speak on the topic of the CPRB.
Hello, my name is Brian Dolinar. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana, and I wanted to address what is going on with the civilian police review board and what's not going on. As I understand it now, the review board is only meeting quarterly. The last time they met was late July. The next time will be October 28th. So this seems infrequent, given the kind of bold task that the CPRB has before them, and it's the issue I want to address tonight. And even I've spoken with at least one member of the review board who thinks that it needs to be meeting more frequently. And one thing has been stated is that CPRB is not meeting because there's no complaints that have been appealed for them to look at, but as we know from the original ordinance passed in 2007, the goals of the CPRB were much wider than just reviewing the appeals of complaints. They were supposed to look at IDOT racial profiling numbers produced by the Illinois Department of Transportation. They just came out this summer finding that racial profiling numbers, the racial disparity index, if there was a kind of one-to-one ratio, there would be no racial profiling. And what is found is that the figure now in Urbana is 1.49, which is unusually high for cities of our size or for the region, even higher than Champaign still. They increased slightly from last year when they were 1.47. This is for, the dates for 2007 and most recently 2008, the number's 1.49. Now, these are said to be just numbers, but what they are is of total stops, 2,194 were stops of whites. For minorities, the number was 1,831. Okay? So while whites were more often to be pulled over, there's just about a difference of 300-plus stops between minority and white category. And of course, the minorities represent about a third of the population, blacks or whites, two-thirds of the population. So whites just simply are more numerous, more white people driving around. But yet, it's more often minorities that are stopped, and many more. If you look at minority, minorities who are stopped for equipment violations, there were 576. This is 30%, 31% of the reason, total reason, why they were stopped. In the past, there'd been some discussion about no minor equipment violations would lead to a traffic stop, but this is, seems to be happening quite frequently still. If you look at consent searches in Urbana, there were 15 whites and 15 minorities that were stopped for consent searches. Seven whites were found with contraband, five minorities found with contraband. So if you simply, that's white and black, rather, 15 to 15, white to black, seven whites, five blacks found. So even though whites and blacks are stopped equally, whites are more likely to be found with contraband. Again, disproving any theories that, well, blacks are drug dealers or more likely to be doing drugs, when it appears to be that whites are more likely. The ACLU has called for an end to consent searches altogether, and I think that's a reasonable demand. IDOT numbers, there's plenty to look at for the CPRB to keep them busy. The other issue is a recent decision out of Springfield before the Illinois State Appeals Board, a Springfield case of Mark Gekas versus Sangamon County Sheriff's Department, when the Appeals Board, Illinois State Appeals Board, ruled that internal police reports are public, okay? So that any internal investigations the police on themselves, particular officers, for example, who is conducting these consent searches, these are all public record. And this was immediately relevant to the task of the CPRB and should be further explored. All public, all police records, even internal investigation, should be now public, which was different than when the board was founded. These are two things that could keep folks busy. And sitting in on several meetings of the CPRB in its first months of founding, it's been a year now. It was May of '08 when they first started meeting regularly. Of the meetings I attended, there was a great deal of interest, enthusiasm, but that seems to have diminished. I am personally involved with the local Citizens Committee with the Champaign County Board. It's the Citizens Advisory Committee on Jury Selection, and it's looking at jury disparity specifically in the Champaign County courthouse. We've been extremely successful. We had a conference call with a nationwide expert out of Washington, DC. We are revising the questionnaire that's sent out to prospective jurors. Our meetings have been attended by the presiding judge, DeFonis, by the court administrator, by the public defender. We had a presentation by the local court-watching study. We're meeting twice a month, okay? And we are an advising committee, simply, we have no power, simply an advising committee. So the CPRB, which has a bold mission, really needs to be meeting more frequently.
Excuse me, you have about 30 seconds left of your five minutes.
Okay, thank you. The other issue is appointing felons. Felons are banned from sitting on the CPRB here in Urbana. In fact, our jury committee has a felon as the chair, and he's been extremely successful and shown a great deal of passion. I have to say that the chair of the CPRB in Urbana, Tom Costello, from my observations, seems to be, to lack that kind of enthusiasm and personal investment, okay? And I would consider, I don't know how the chair was appointed, I don't know how long they're sitting on the CPRB, but I would consider, suggest considering a new chair for the CPRB, who shows some more initiative, can meet more frequently. It's been a year now, and the public, I think, has virtually no knowledge that the CPRB exists. I just saw a flyer out front of the city building here about the CPRB. That's the first sign that I've seen, but I had to come in the city building to find it. I haven't seen it in the public libraries. It might be there, but I haven't seen it. Again, I want to state, I am not anti-police, that Chief Beely has been open and forthright and transparent in all of my conversations with him, but we want to ensure that the CPRB really has some teeth. It's not just a pet committee, but that it really is fulfilling the bold mission that it has set before it in the 2007 ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dolinar? Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda is...
I apologize, I missed my opportunity for a brief staff report, but I'd like to update council on our student welcome effort for this year, if I could.
Sure.
We are engaged, we're in the middle of our student welcome effort for the year. It's a little different than what we've done the last couple of years, in that we were not out on the streets on Move-In Day, but we are participating in a cooperative effort between the City of Champaign and the University of Illinois through these door hangers, which have a brochure tucked into the door hanger about living in Urbana. So that is one component of the effort. We had a table at Quad Day this year, which is a new component of the effort, and we are also working with Public Works to do a joint recycling slash welcome-to-Urbana distribution that is kind of a third component of what we've done to this point. And we're going to be distributing brochures that give contact information and a map of all the businesses that someone new to the city might need, and those will be distributed to banks, supermarkets, hotels, motels, restaurants, places that someone new to Urbana might be able to pick these up and learn more about the city. So that's my report.
Any questions? Comments? Charlie?
So, Tom, the new students haven't actually gotten the map of Urbana businesses, they've just gotten this.
We are doing another effort that does include the map of Urbana, and that's being distributed separately, but to many of the same addresses that this was sent out to.
Will it get into the dorms with the new students? That's my biggest concern.
We're working with the university to do that, but we, it was not done, it has not been done to this point, but we're working with the university to get them into the dorms.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. We'll move on to ordinance number 2009-08-094, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of annexation agreement, 2707 Airport Road. Terrence A. Bielaski.
Good evening. Basically, Mr. Bielaski is requesting approval of the annexation agreement for 2707 East Airport Road. It includes approximately .65 acres that are southwest of the intersection of Brownfield Road and Airport Road. They're requesting the connection so that they can build a single-family house on the lot. Because the property is not contiguous, but within a mile and a half, they are required to do an annexation agreement. As you've probably seen on your schedule at your September 8 meeting, this will have a public hearing, and then at that same meeting, you will act on the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement is in your packet. It's pretty standard as far as zoning. It'll convert directly from county R1 zoning to city R1 zoning. This is consistent with the surrounding properties as well as the comprehensive plan. Development regulations, the proposed house does meet the setbacks of the Urbana zoning ordinance, and anything in the future would need to also meet that. They are currently, the petitioner is currently working with the county for an administrative variance for their setback requirements. As far as building code, the annexation agreement requires that any future development comply with our building code. And then finally, there is right-of-way, the petitioner will be dedicating right-of-way on Brownfield Road of approximately 40 feet. Based on the findings that are outlined in our staff memo, staff recommends forwarding the proposed annexation agreement to city council with a recommendation for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Kevin?
I would move that we send ordinance number 2009-05-049 to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Stevenson, second...
Oh, I said 49, 494.
Zero four nine.
I said zero four. I said it all wrong. Ordinance number 2009-08-094.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Charlie?
Yeah, quick question for you. The aerial view shows a car and some buildings. Is there already a house on this property? Is this a replacement structure, or, I'm not following here exactly.
There used to be a house on the lot that burnt down. What you're seeing, there is a vehicle that's stored on there, and then there were, at the time this was taken, a couple of storage sheds. The one has been removed, and there is one that will still remain.
So the house is, yes, there was a...
Yes. There was a house here that burnt down, and it was demolished, and they're now proposing to build a new house on this lot.
Brandon?
And Lisa, before our final vote, can the next packet include the right-of-way dedication piece?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't add that, but yes, it will. You'll have the language in your package, your packet, next at the council meeting for September 8.
Cool. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This has been forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2009-05-049, an ordinance approving an agreement with Frederick Bojard for the design and installation of a newspaper rack located at 101 East Main Street, Champaign County Courthouse site.
I have an update from previous meetings and presentations to you to address some of your questions from the last meeting, July 23, 2009. So I will begin with the discussion of project size and need. There's been discussion about changing the newspaper rack design from a 12-unit project to a six-unit project to an eight-unit project, and we have approximate cost estimations for each of those sizes. For a six-unit scenario, the project cost would be $53,600. For the eight-unit, it would be $60,000. And for the 12-unit project, the total cost would be $66,050. And the artist's concept has allowed for the variety of these sizes. The essence of the concept doesn't change based on size. Currently, there are 11 news racks located on the corner of Broadway Avenue and Elm Street. There are a total of 12 dispensers, because there's one unit that has two papers in the one unit. And there is also, there are 11 publications being distributed from that location. So there's one open and empty box. And there's a list provided in your memo of all of the publications that's been updated. If it were to be downsized, there is concern that the current demand would not be able to be accommodated, and the potential for undesirable and uncontrolled news racks would continue unless otherwise regulated. And we've attached an updated photograph of the current news racks, as well as a larger rendering of the Urbana stand concept in your memo. We have been in contact with publication distributors for five of the publications, who have all said that they intend to continue to distribute their publications in that area. So there, we predict that there is definite interest in continuing to promote and make available those publications. The installation of a uniform rack, the proposal location would be more appealing, more visible, and additionally convenient for sales. And in talking to one of the distributors, they mentioned that there may be interest for additional publications to be vending from that location. If the city, in conjunction with the Champaign County, is able to provide for a sufficiently-sized appropriately-placed news rack vending alternative, it would be reasonable for the city to restrict the placement of uncontrolled news racks in the area, and we will inquire about the specifics on those regulations. There was a question at the last presentation of this item regarding maintenance, and we have received some information on that. The materials for the Urbana stand would be, would include steel and laminated glass, and it's estimated that the steel will be treated with high-performance paint, requiring repainting every 15 to 20 years, and the glass will have periodic cleaning, which could be accomplished by existing staff and materials. Additional maintenance due to vandalism could occur. However, we think that this location will discourage such vandalism because of its proximity to the courthouse and the Champaign County Sheriff's Department, as well as being in a high-traffic area. Another question has been about fundraising. There have been several strategies discussed, included seeking sponsorships, soliciting private donors, and staff is recommending that if fundraising is pursued, that it be in the form of purchasing attractive plaques, such as plaques that have, the plaque that was installed in front of Roger Ebert's childhood home, so a plaque of that kind of quality to be installed on the base in front of the unit. So this would be, instead of disrupting the bricks in the Champaign County Courthouse Plaza, and instead of altering the selection of news stories, we would recommend having, soliciting the purchase of plaques. We've attached two illustrations of the Urbana stand, which shows you where the plaques would be, are conceived. One is for the eight-unit rack, and one is for the 12-unit rack, and that's attached in Exhibit A. We've estimated that the plaques would cost approximately $200, and in soliciting donations for 10 plaques at $1,000 per plaque, we would hope to raise $10,000 in contributions. When that's offset by purchasing the plaques, it would be a net approximate donation of $8,000 to offset the cost of the project. We've also looked at leasing fees and have examined the cities of Des Plaines, Illinois, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Green Bay, Wisconsin, and Saratoga, Florida, all of which have a fee structure. It is within the power of the city to assign fees for the use of such a rack, and so long as it's not, so long as it's offsetting costs and not raising revenue. And you can see examples of those fee structures. We've also included a chart in the memo, which shows that if $50 per unit were charged over a period of 20 years, assuming all of the 12-unit racks are full, $12,000 would offset the cost of purchasing the news rack unit. And $50 is the amount, the annual fee that staff is recommending. There's also been discussion of alternatives to the Urbana stand project. One alternative would be the modular rack, and the Urbana stand is a creative way to deal with an aesthetic streetscape concern through an artistic-designed solution, and there are other ways to address some of the streetscape issues. You can see some examples attached in Exhibit C. And we additionally give cost estimates for those examples shown. You can see that the Arlington is, the estimate cost would be $9,000, roughly $9,000. The Boulevard is closer to $10,000, and $4,000 for the news rack, excuse me, the rack system unit at the bottom of the page. It should be noted that the dispensers in the Urbana stand project have a longer-than-expected lifespan because of the inclusion in the Urbana stand piece. Otherwise, the rack system is expected to last four to five years. So those, the dispensing units, the newspaper rack box that's within the case and the legs, the box itself, could be easily swapped out and changed. So the fiscal impact varies based on the decision of the council. The 12-unit Urbana stand project would be approximately $66,000, including $44,000 in construction costs, $11,000 in artist services, and $10,000 in engineering and design services. The reduced eight-unit alternative would cost approximately $60,000, but would not accommodate all of the current users. The purchase of the, of an alternative modular rack, shown in Exhibit C, is between approximately $4,000 and $10,000. Some of these costs could be offset by the annual rental fee. As previously discussed, there would be a budget transfer, there would be a budget amendment made and a budget transfer from TIF to fund balance, which is reserved for future projects to align item created specifically for the news rack project. So at this time, we recommend that the committee of the whole direct staff, as to whether to proceed with the Urbana stand project as described above and in the attached artist's agreement, along with any adjustments to the scale, and in terms of the suggested financing plan, or to pursue a modular rack. And we recommend that if the committee decides to pursue the Urbana stand project, to forward the attached ordinance to the city council's regular meeting on September 8 with a recommendation for approval.
Any questions or comments? Brandon?
Yeah, thank you for your work again on this, Anna, and to everybody, the artists, everybody who's patiently worked on it. I think it's up to us tonight to give a clear decision about what to do next. I know staff has continued to invest a lot of time in it, for everybody to continue sort of poring over options and alternatives and working with architects. It's incredibly time-consuming, and we have so many different products to work on. So whatever we do, I hope that we can talk through it to come to some really clear direction for our staff. They specifically asked, you know, what, whether to proceed with the project as described, what size, what financing plan, or pursuing an alternative. My suggestion at this point is as follows: to set a timeline and initiate this fundraising, and if we can raise $10,000 from the public in 12 months, that proves that our community is behind this, and at that point, we initiate construction and go ahead. And if we fail to do so, then implementing one of the other modular systems. I think it's a significant cost, and if the community's behind it and can help us fundraise for 15 or 20% of the project, to me, that meets a threshold where we should put the TIF funding behind it and do the project. And if we give it time and we can't raise community support, and the community doesn't show that they're behind it to that extent, then we simply go with an alternative option. I kind of feel like that's where I've come to, is let's give the community a chance to raise a piece of these funds and set a clear time limit so that everyone knows what's happening next. And I wonder what other people feel.
Dennis?
This is not really a very easy project to determine, because certainly, the aspect of it that is, that creates an amenity and an art, an art object in the downtown area is very positive, and I support that. And I'd like to see the creativity that's been brought forward to address this question. And I think it's an interesting initiative. Of course, we were all a little amazed at the cost, as it turns out. And I had concerns about, including in this display, a more contemporary, interactive plasma model, you know, message board that, you know, had more to do with contemporary computer graphics and technology that would help turn the downtown into an interactive experience for people who came here to pull up information, schedules, gallery address information, and history of the city. And I still think that is a part that, I guess it's really on my shoulders to bring forward the technology that would be, make that possible, and I have made inquiries, and I just haven't heard back from the people, my sources. So it's, that's too theoretical, and I guess I'm not, I think it's an important consideration, but it's a different project. You pointed out that it was, it would kind of redefine the project. So even though I think it's, it would make this the most viable kind of, in a newspaper rack, because it would serve two different kinds of media at once, and it would be very positive, I'm going to have to find out some more information, and maybe I can bring that to you. I don't want to give up on this project completely, but I was wondering about the possibility of going with the smaller project and having six units, and still nonetheless, purchasing a modular newspaper rack for the mere cost of $4,000 to serve the other 11 newspapers. In other words, we could have, we could service the distribution of these newspapers in a modern and updated manner, two different ways. One, having the large display, and we could locate the others in a nearby location or adjacent location, but save money by using just the plain modular racks on their mounts. And, I mean, I... And, I mean, I, I'm going to suggest that as a possible compromise for this, for this project. I think it would downscale the cost enough to make it somewhat palatable to the public as a whole, if you also consider that, that we're addressing here and creating an art piece for the downtown. And we know that art is not super cheap, it's an expensive commodity, just like, you know, buying a car, or buying furniture for your home, or remodeling your house. We're remodeling the downtown, we're upgrading, and I'd, I'd like to see actually us have it kind of both ways at once. I don't know what the city's requirements are legally to provide nice places for all these newspaper racks. I think it's our determination, you know, where the racks are permitted in the downtown area and where they're not. I don't know if there'd be a way of having to make some kind of determine or a lottery about which of the selected newspapers are placed in the fancier rack versus the, the average rack, if we went with a double prong process. But I'm, I'm just going to suggest that for a matter of debate tonight, we might consider solving the problem two different ways at the same time. Okay, that's my input.
David.
I'm, I'm really hesitant to address the, making any changes of the design of the project, because whatever it was that we were chosen for to, to sit here, I don't think any of us ran on our, our superior design skills as part of our, of our platform. I, I think that let's, my, my inclination is to leave the design to the designers. I, basically, I, I'm in agreement with Brandon's position that we, we have gotten some, a number, or a certain amount of feedback on the expense of the project, and that it would be very helpful to have a community involvement in some form of fundraising to, to help offset the cost. My inclination is, you suggested basically 10 and 12, my inclination would be more $5, $5,000 in six months, simply because we don't want to endlessly keep pushing the, this, this thing in, over the horizon. I'd, I'd like to see a, a quicker resolution than that. But my, my inclination again is to go with the project as designed, with the addition of some tasteful fundraising plaques, but with a, a six-month window rather than a 12-month window.
Robert.
Well, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Bowsack's assessment. I think it's appropriate, considering, I got hit pretty hard with newspaper about my vote the last time and said, "Why is he doing that?" And we got so many people out of work, blah, blah, blah. Not really going through the logistics of what the monies were set aside some time ago for this. But I agree, if, if the public is concerned, I think they should consider it, and we should have them weigh in. And I think that's an appropriate way of doing it. Thanks.
Mayor.
To answer Dennis's question about us regulating, I think it's up to the sheriff on the courthouse. And I think that we need to have something that looks more attractive, but I, I don't think we should be spending that kind of money. And if there's something that looks good that costs $4,000, which the 12-unit standard dispensing is, if that's for $4,000, I think that's what we should go for. Because I don't think we should cut back on the number of newspapers, and I think we should maybe have some other kind of art project, but I don't think that a newspaper rack is what the public wants. And I've not gotten any positive comments, I've gotten all negative comments.
Heather.
Well, I too have gotten a lot of negative comments, and not necessarily negative comments about the, the idea of a newspaper rack, but the money, people just can't see spending that kind of money, especially in, right now. But also, in a time where newspapers are going by the ways that I'm looking back at Tom Kasek. And my daughter's 16, and with the exception of the fact that she was athlete of the week, I don't think she's probably much looked at a paper in her life, except to see herself in the paper, in the sports section. She gets her information from websites. And so, I just think it's a huge amount of money to be spending right now, especially on a, on a product that we don't know, you know. Would, I'd like to see newspapers stick around, absolutely, but, you know, this is a different generation that's being raised, so we have to look to the future also when we're spending this kind of money. So, I, my, my position is that now is not the time for something like this.
Charlie.
I guess since everybody's weighed in, I might as well too. I guess I sit somewhere in the middle here. I don't think $10,000 is sufficient public commitment, enough money to be raised. We have $15,000 in our budget, this, you know, $5,000 a year for three years. You figure another year of, of a city contribution would take us to $20,000. I would expect more like a $40,000 private fundraising contribution to make this a go. And that, that kind of expense I could live with, but, you know, otherwise, I agree with the mayor. If we can't raise that level of, of public involvement, I mean, the county raised, what, $2 million to do a clock tower?
1.1.
What is it, what was it?
1.1 or 2.
1.1, 1.2 million, yeah. I mean, we raised $2 million for the library. I, I would imagine we should be able to raise $40,000 or $45,000 for a piece of art for downtown, and, and that I could support. But I, I can't see us spending more than what we've budgeted of the $5,000 a year, say for four years of, of city funds.
Mayor.
We did contribute to the restoration of the clock tower on the courthouse, and they need, I think it's under $200,000 to finish it. And I think the money would be better spent on a contribution to that beautiful restored clock tower than it would be on this project.
May I speak to this? Do I need to turn the chair over? I can just, okay.
Diane.
I've heard from the public, and I don't need to wait a few more months, and I've heard nothing but opposition, except for one person who just asked some questions. But that coupled with my own concerns leads me to not being able to support this project. I've spoken before, I'm concerned about the very high cost. Even with some fundraising, we're still looking at $40,000 or $50,000. I'm concerned about the size of this in relation to the need. I agree we need to do something about the very unsightly jumble of boxes on the corner of Elm and Broadway. I think a modular rack in the neighborhood of $4,000 to $5,000 would, would solve the problem perfectly. And, and it would give a shorter-term solution to a need that may be shorter-term rather than long-term. I, I, at this point, there are only three newspapers sold there and some items given away. And there's, this, this community supports the arts, I support the arts, but I just simply cannot support this particular project. It is far too expensive for the need that we have there. And I agree with contribution to the bell tower project. We have an icon, we have this gorgeous clock and bell tower that now is really becoming the symbol of downtown. And if we, if we want to support art in the near future, I think that would be a very good place to put some money.
I'm going to turn the chair back over to Diane.
Thank you. Charlie.
Yeah, I, I guess I should have clarified that, you know, my, my statement of, of support, you know, using the city's current contribution of $5,000 a year for, for years, plus whatever could be raised publicly, stems from my conversations with my constituents who thought that, you know, the city has a certain amount of budgeted, that was a reasonable amount they saw in their eyes to spend on this project, but that, that to do a, a major public art piece like this should include a large component of public fundraising. So, that, just to clarify my position.
Any other comments? Dennis?
Well, okay, just in all fairness, I did talk to a person who has a business downtown. They said they were somewhat torn, that ultimately, even though they thought it was an expense, they felt that because it was art and they support the arts, and they felt the art should come into the downtown area, they could understand the, the project as being positive. And that's the only field, I have not had anybody really talk to me about negative feedback as far as, well, okay, I have one or two people who have actually asked me about that, but for a businessperson, I thought that was an interesting comment, that in hard times, they still supported the arts. I just thought I'd...
Any other comments? Mayor.
We do have an effort to raise some more money for art in the park, which we thought would be done by now, but I think that art piece, which was planned maybe 20 years ago, we're on the verge of getting it done. So, there are other competing art projects that I think we should put this money to instead of the newspaper rack, which we could, I think, get something very decent for $4,000.
Heather.
Anna, I just want to tell you thank you for all your hard work. I, I just don't want you to feel like you've done all this work for nothing, and I, I'm sure that's got to be going through your head right now, and I'm, so I'm sorry for that. But, you know, based on the fact that we represent our constituents, and that's where, where we have to voice, be a voice for them, and that's what I'm doing. It's not, anything against arts, it's, it's what I'm, what I'm doing is being a voice for the people who got me here.
Charlie.
I'd like to make a motion then, based on what I said, and see how it flies here. I'd like to move that we move forward this project contingent on a four-year contribution of the city of a total of $20,000, the remainder to be raised through public fundraising.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there, are there any, any discussion? Brandon.
Yeah, I guess, to me, I would suggest that somehow we have a timeline. David's suggestion is good, really, that a short timeline helps to know quickly whether you've gauged community support. I don't think it's feasible to raise $40,000 for this particular project in this economic climate. I'm comfortable with the city's share being larger and the, the fundraising picture that staff put together in the memo. But regardless, I think either way, we would need some timeline of when, and I wonder if Charlie, if you as the motion maker have some idea of what amount you would suggest we raise by a certain date that triggers the project.
Basically, it's, it's a four-year city contribution, which means that we'd, we'd do it in another year. We have three years already raised, I'd expect to be going forward in a year from now.
So, to clarify, you want $20,000 from the city and $40,000 from the public?
Right.
Up to $40,000 from the public.
Yeah, roughly.
Dennis.
Then, then it's going to be important to initiate a clear and understandable fundraising effort for this project. I think it's possible that you could get people interested in this. I, I, I think it's not, it's not quite as firm as standing, because the city council itself is divided on it. If the city council wants to really support this, I think this, this, the city population would feel stronger about donating to it. It's kind of, it's a, it's an unusual project, and it may be, you know, may be a very worthy place to, especially if your family or your business is related to journalism, or the history of, the history of the city, or the, the interest in, in the newspaper as a tool of communication in our society, you know, and maybe the communications department, the journalism department at university will want to weigh in on this one and take some lead or something. But I think that there'll have to be a pretty thoughtful outreach for fundraising for this project, which I think maybe it probably deserves if it went to go forward.
Can you take the chair again?
Yes.
I'd like, one more, one more comment. This is an unusual project in that it's supposed to be functional streetscape art. So, it's a, it's not just pure, a pure art piece, but it also is supposed to serve a function. And bottom line is, we're going to have a $60,000 newspaper rack, is what people will see this as. And that's what I keep coming back to, and it's, I just cannot justify doing that at this time. Thank you.
The chair is back to you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Mayor.
Well, I, I think it would be fair for the people who want to raise the money to actually conduct the fundraising effort, rather than putting it on city staff.
Do we have a volunteer? Well, we have a motion on the floor. Would you care to restate that, Charlie, so we're all clear on that?
I was basically saying that the city would contribute, you know, they, we've, we've put $5,000 a year into a budget for art in this part of downtown. We've raised, we have $15,000 in the budget, in another year, we'd have 20 at the rate we're going. I would expect the difference to be raised through public fundraising, plus or minus. You know, I, I realize the project is estimated at $66,000. I, I think, you know, 40, 40, $40,000 to $45,000 fundraising effort would be what's expected in, in the space of about a year.
And that was seconded by Heather. Dennis.
Hi, David.
Okay. Brandon.
Yeah, I guess I wondered just a bit about the mechanics, if we do go this route, Anna, Anna, maybe you could help answer this. Under a scenario like this, where we set a fundraising goal and a timeline, would we go ahead and execute the artist agreement with some contingency that, you know, the trigger is pulled on the project in 12 months or sooner when we raise, when we raise the, the sort of the public share? Or is there a different, you know, a different mechanism? Or do we just wait entirely on the artist agreement piece? I guess I wonder, does this, how does this practically play out? And does, you know, can we execute this?
We were just talking about the novelty of city fundraising, and it's, we seek grants, for example, and we grant permits and permissions, and we engage in activities, but ordinarily fundraising is a citizen or volunteer activity. So, we're just talking amongst ourselves, is this something the Public Arts Commission would be willing to take on as a project? But I think the staff commitment to actually go out and pound, and that would be a lot of time and could raise some problems for us.
Mayor.
I, I would like to say that it costs money to raise money.
Exactly.
And I think you're going to have to have a fundraising budget. What the library did was hire a staff person. I hope you're not thinking about hiring a staff person to do this.
Brandon.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I think it would depend on, we, we, we would sort of have to make the open call, and maybe this comes from the Public Arts Commission, for people to be on a fundraising committee and see what community interest there is, and even joining a fundraising committee. The idea of selling plaques works for $10,000 and 10 plaques, but doesn't scale to 40. So, you know, I mean, unless you have a lot of space on the base of this concrete thing for a lot of plaques, I think the committee would probably have to have some further discussions about what kinds of donations to solicit and what kinds of ways to put people's name on it or recognize them for being part. And that's a scheme that we have given you no direction here on, but that, but that I think we're asking for the interested public, the Arts Commission members, and people to, to step forward who are interested in supporting the project, rather than, rather than having you as city staff simply go into entire fundraising mode alone.
Robert.
I would like to ask, at this point, with all the investments made thus far, with the design work that's been completed, the engineering investment, has that been taken care of at this point?
Yes.
It's been paid for?
Yes.
Okay. So, we just have to work out the logistics of the construction and all that? That's what this cost is all about? Okay. Design has not been paid for?
Oh, I'm sorry, the work to present the information has been paid for, like the illustrations in your packet, that kind of thing, but the, the, I think it's $10,000 in a... packet, that kind of thing, but the, the, I think it's $10,000 and $17,000, those have not been expended yet. So the, the potential cost would still be, round numbers, 66,000 before fundraising for 12 racks, and with the $10,000 effort as described, that would knock that down.
What would the construction costs, here at construction cost be?
It's in the memo.
The construction cost of the 12-unit rack?
Yes. Well, I was concerned that the people are going to have to wait a year to, after they have made their investment in time and effort in getting this done. If we're going to go down the road of waiting a year for money to be raised or whatever to pay the cost of this, I wouldn't want to be sitting around as a designer waiting for my check to come, or an engineer waiting for my check to come. So I think it would behoove the city to, if that's the case, the logistics of getting that taken care of upfront would be the cost of doing business, I guess.
Right.
And that should take place immediately, and if we go into the fundraising thing, that's, that's an afterthought, as far as I'm concerned.
And I think we could budget that and then credit that amount towards that expenditure.
But I think the public needs to understand, you know, if you're going to take this duration of time, we need to take care of the immediate things first.
Dennis?
Well, in, in my business, which is book publishing, if we have a, a design that doesn't work for some reason, we pay the artist a kill fee, i.e. that it's not, you know, it's not used, it doesn't become the cover of the book, but we recognize that, you know, effort has been done. It's not usually the full cost of the cover, but it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's a recompense for time placed so far for a design that didn't ultimately work for the publisher. So, I mean, we may want to, you know, talk about that. I don't, I think that if, if, if this is not carried through, the, the expenses that we're expected to handle, the patent rights, would necessarily, you know, come to bear on the project, but certainly time and effort involved. So I think the Community Arts Commission or the staff at, you know, or Anna Halter, Hallhalter would have to come up with suggested, you know, putting to bed fee or something for the project.
One more. We did bring, you know, the, the council started this process many years ago before the Arts Commission got the project. When we had the discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, their position was, if a project came in too far over budget, or sculpture came in too far over budget, or whatever, it's a done deal, it's a no-go, no-go project, period. But since the council was engaged in this process, that's why we carried it over in trying to make this project work for, you know, purposes of the council being involved in this process. But as far as the commission, the art commission is concerned, if a project comes in over budget, it's a, it's a dead issue. We'll go to another vendor, or whatever the case may be. But that's, that's their posture on over-budget art projects.
I guess I'll, I'll just say that we've learned a lot about the process of commissioning pieces of public art through this three-year time period. When we made the call for designs originally for this newspaper rack project, there was not a maximum budget, and we discussed as staff in the Streetscape Committee whether there should be or shouldn't be. And the deci, the decision was to not have a maximum cost for the project, so that we would have it open to the availability of creativity in the designs. So then, I don't think we'll be doing that for the next call. I think we've learned being very specific initially just makes things much more clear throughout the whole process. In terms of the Public Arts Commission's involvement for the future, I don't want to speak for them, so in our next meeting in September, I'll bring forward whatever the decision of the committee is to them for discretion. I think they could be an appropriate fundraising body if they choose to. I don't want to say that they are, they certainly haven't planned to fundraise for this project. They're planning to fundraise for the pro, the work plan that has already been set, and their projections for future years. So I just wanted to say that.
Mayor?
I did talk with a member of the Arts Commission, and this individual was very negative about this process. Not the process, this project, sorry, that this, the cost is just excessive.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote on this, or? As I understand it, it is to commit $20,000 in city funds and raise up to 40,000 to 45,000 in public funds within a one-year period. Was it one year for this project? And at the end of that time, the funds are not there, then the project will die.
Be contingent on taking care of all the upfront monies for the people that have made investments thus far. Would you agree, Charlie, to that?
I'm not sure what those monies are.
I don't, I'm not sure either, but I'm saying we do take care of those folks that have made the investment thus far, if we're going to make this one-year duration.
Okay. I'm seeing what you're saying, that there's some costs that have been incurred that we should go ahead and pay.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, is this, okay, now, my, since this was, I'm not sure, I, was my intention to, to take care of this once and for all, though it's in the, in the form of an ordinance, I'm not sure whether, whether the ordinance gets approved now or a year from now, once the fundraising is completed. My intention was more as a, as a motion to move forward, as a sta, at a staff level, to move forward this project, to raise the money, and then we'd come back and commit it. But, but if we're committing funds, it would actually require that we send this to council and draft it with some appropriate language. So that sort of changes the, the whole way this works. So I'm not, I'm not sure how to proceed.
Brandon?
I guess that was sort of my question about the mechanics. It seems to me we don't execute the artist agreement until we raise, you know, until we hit our fundraising goal, and that's when we start contracting for the glass and the artists and all of it. We could have an artist agreement that would take into account that trigger, you know, and say, okay, we'll sign an agreement with the artist now, knowing that the agreement is, when we hit our $40,000 mark, that's what kicks off the project, and that's what financially obligates us and obligates the artist to do all of those pieces that the artist would deliver, and, you know, and at that point, the clock starts on the schedule, the, kind of, the month-by-month. We do this, we do that, we're out on the site building it, that is part of that artist's contract would start then. My one other comment is that I think, maybe if you would accept this as a friendly amendment, we didn't take into account in the $40,000 number, the fact that $12,000 of revenue comes from fees associated with charging the, charging for sale in the boxes. And so the leasing fees can bring in $12,000, and the public fundraising component then could be reduced by $12,000.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, well, that's why I said it's 40,000 and 20,000, there's another 6,000 or so unaccounted for. Over a 20-year period, $50 a year is a very small amount of money. I can't, you know, it might be 12,000 over 20 years, but with interest and whatnot, that's not a very large sum of money. I would consider that the $6,000 that I haven't accounted for here, sort of splitting the difference. So, yes, that, that's the additional revenue that comes in, but, but I would, I would discount the inflation and, and so on. That's why I think the $40,000, I think, I think we need a $40,000 commitment from the public, a $20,000 commitment from the city, and the rest can be raised through exactly that, through the fees.
So as part of your motion, we would institute the $50 per unit fee recommended by staff?
Yes.
Until we raised $6,000?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Okay, maybe, maybe it would be good to add another motion to this, or ancillary motion, that what, all right, I'm just going to say it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I clarified, clarified Brandon's piece. I have accepted that as a friendly amendment. You're the seconder on that, but a second motion wouldn't be appropriate at this point. A friendly amendment to, to what I've got on the table would be.
Then I'll wait.
Mayor? I have a question. You're talking about future revenue, but all these costs have to be paid when the project is built. So where does the future revenue help with that?
I don't, I think $6,000, you know, is, is something we can float for a few years, if it's coming in at $50 a year per, per box.
You mean, the city would have to budget more than 20,000? You're saying the city would have to budget 26,000?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
And then we'd have to raise 40,000?
Right, yeah.
And, but you're not accounting for the cost of actually raising the money?
No.
Assuming that that will come free.
Yes.
I want to call a question.
Shall I restate the motion to the best of my ability? We have a motion on the floor to provide up to $20,000 in city funding, $40,000 in public fundraising. It assumes a $50 per unit fee, up to $6,000 over the next 20 years. And we have a friendly amendment to recoup the costs incurred in the project so far. Is there anything else? 12,000 over 20 years. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. I believe it carries.
Okay, and I've got another thing to add on this topic.
Okay.
All right. You asked that I not say it at the time, so I'm going to say it now. All right. So we have, we've had the artist now work with us for three, three years, and we're extending it to four years. So I, I think that it might be worth our consideration to stipulate a some fund, and I guess you can determine what that's going to be, to recompense the artist at this point. And if the project gets killed, then that'd be the sum total of the amount that he would receive. And I would suggest maybe $2,000.
Charlie?
If I could suggest, I'd suggest you send, send this, a motion, make a motion directing staff to draw up some appropriate agreement that would provide the artist with some recompense per year approach as a publisher, the publisher-type idea?
Right.
And bring that back, a draw, as a separate agreement with, with the artist.
That's correct. So, okay, that's what I'm suggesting.
Brandon?
Yeah, I don't think, I'm privy to enough information now to know whether that's something I would support or not, because I actually don't know personally what, under what terms the artist responds to this. If it was an RFP that clearly said, you know, this is just a proposal, and you're not going to get compensated for just putting in this proposal. I, I don't know the terms and the conversations that staff have had over all these years with the artist, so I feel kind of uncomfortable picking a dollar amount. It's a question that I have for staff, and something we could talk about over time. Yeah, Libby, if you have a particular response to that?
Well, we might need to come back. I think the motion might be, that was passed, may have some flaws in terms of, how can we, how can somebody fundraise for something that may not come to pass? How can we represent a project for which we really don't have an agreement, and for which the, the rights of the design was kind of the critical point? So I think we may have some logistical problems pursuing the motion that, and we, and we should need, not in this forum, with the artist to talk about some of the things that Councilmember Roberts raised. And, you know, maybe we, we'll need to do a little more legwork on this piece and come back, and I think this was appropriate for motion rather than action on the ordinance at this point, because I don't think, the ordinance is just to get the agreement with those costs. And if that's not, if we're not able to act on that now, that's, it's appropriate not to have action on that. But I think it's a very tall order that's been set, and some contradictory elements. But we can, we can try to sort through those and try again, come back to a committee and give a progress report.
Charlie?
And that was the idea of the motion, that it stays at the staff level and, and to be worked on, gives us some time, but we're clearly not sending the ordinance itself to council at this point.
So no further action is needed on number seven?
Well, okay, I just wanted to ask staff to come up with a suggestion in case this is not going to go forward, and how to deal with the arts, the artist's time and effort so far.
Yes. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Ordinance number, or, number eight. Ordinance number 2009-08-09-5, an ordinance vacating a portion of Sycamore Street, north of Park Street. Public Works.
And actually, I just had a point of order about the agenda tonight. I don't know if our presenters were ready. I know we kind of bumped them to the very end after number 11, but at some point, mixed in here, I don't know how long some of these other discussions might take, some are about new policies. We could, if they're ready, jump them into the, the mix, so that they, since they've been waiting here patiently, could, could give that presentation.
Would you like to have them go now?
Yeah, are you all ready at this point? Okay. If that's, if that's okay with the group.
Sure. Sure, we'll have the presentation on the website and the marketing update.
Okay, great. So I think the folks here from Royce Wagner can come up and, and take a seat at this table. Sorry for the switcheroo there bell of, of agenda items. I just figured I'd throw in that request, since I know we have vendors here patiently waiting.
All right, appreciate that. The, the error was mine. It was a Mac PC thing with my jump drive, it didn't work with the...
So if you please state your name for the record? Oh, Tom?
Yeah, I was just going to do a brief introduction.
Okay.
You have before you a memo, kind of giving you some of the background on both the marketing project and the website project. There was an effort to secure services for both efforts, and those efforts resulted in the selection of Royce Wagner for both of those, both the marketing effort and the website effort. And tonight, we have Andrew Schofield and Chad McKenzie from Royce Wagner to give us an update on both projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, all righty, good to go.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Hopefully, this will be a fun topic. We are excited to have the opportunity to fill you in on where we are on the website, and to give you more or less an overview of what we found in the marketing analysis, and in addition to that, our recommendations. So I'd like to move forward. While the two RFPs were totally separate, obviously, they are very much linked to each other, and we treated them as such. We started with, we had interviews with internal folks and a few external folks that were scheduled for both projects, and it's been nearly a year now since we had those. You have a little bit of a summary of the information in the report, but I want to hit the highlights of the findings from those interviews and from the rest of our analysis. Look at the marketing recommendations. Chad is going to talk about designs at the very end, so, because I, I know everybody wants to flip forward, we've got copies of the report with some color copies of designs, but we're going to wait to pass those out till we're just ready to do them. The, I would like to acknowledge staff for both the projects and... And in the same vein, for web development, Councilman Bowersock, Smythe, Bill DuJarnet, Sean Fluno, and Kelly Kunda. And we still have lots of time left, but they've been terrific to work with on both projects, and have spent a lot of time on your behalf. So, we have the two projects, same goals. Probably the biggest goal in terms of what initiated this particular project was the need to differentiate Urbana from other cities, particularly in the climate where for economic development and attracting business and industry, it's highly competitive among cities, goes along with the website project as well, because many of the companies that are looking for places to bring their new business, their development, are looking on the website. So as a 24/7 way to cut down 10 cities to three cities, or five cities to two cities, we want to be able to provide recommendations that'll get you in that top two so they come and talk with you. Also, to convey a positive professional and appealing image of Urbana to targeted audiences, we saw a number of different comments by people, minutes from communications report, a number of folks in the interviews as well, who felt like we needed to tighten up the image of Urbana to provide the whole kind of package that would give the professionalism that you're interested in. Also, the third area is really to make communications a valued resource for audiences, again, in particular with regard to the website. We want people to come back to the website, we want people to rely on the website for good current information. So that's kind of the vein in which we approach both projects. In the interviews, there was lots of agreement on the positive aspects of Urbana, and the things that kind of drive the people who work in Urbana, and certainly the people who make decisions. Quality of life, and that's walkability, bikeability, you know, having a sound infrastructure, delivering quality services that people need. The diversity issues, and diversity in every respect, the balanced growth plans, again, looking at some big issues that continue to come up from year to year, the historic preservation rather as opposed to new, how does Urbana handle it? That's another one. And then the proven commitment to green. So those are kind of major themes that ran throughout many of the comments. There was also a good deal of agreement on the goals for the communications, the web case to showcase Urbana's positive attributes, to be a 24/7 resource, and also that folks agreed that they needed guidelines and tools if they were to take a bigger role in consolidating communications and really promoting Urbana in a branded kind of way. Based on all of that, we talked about what values we wanted to stress, what values really differentiated Urbana, and what values provide a realistic and compelling picture of Urbana. And one that we came up with, and this is, this is the idea, not the verbatim, certainly we won't put that anywhere, but Urbana champions the harmonious blend of diversity, of thought, neighborhoods, capabilities, race, ethnicity, socio-economic groupings, to create the excellent quality of life for those who live, work, visit, and do business in Urbana. So those core values, they actually run through almost everything that we saw that you do in your comprehensive plan, those kinds of values are present. In the vision statement that we have reviewed, those values are present. Certainly, in the feelings of staff people that we talked to about what their role was, those were very much a part of it. Overall recommendations, three things that, as communications people, we saw right away. One, there was not a really tight uniformity in the overall message. Certainly, there was not a uniformity in the look and feel of materials, down to the really basic kinds of things, the way companies, cities, any entity promotes itself with its logo. No rules, per se. And also, on the website, one of the reasons you put out an RFP, you had a static path, a static website, not a lot of design, and outdated information. Three big reasons for all of those things. First one, you have highly decentralized communications, and you don't have any communications staff. And there are lots of advantages to having decentralized communications, in that people can attend to the things they need to attend to, they don't have a bottleneck up through a single person. But one result of that, then, is that you also have lots of people who are developing communications. So that is the framework that we entered this on. Also, the few standards for the logos and for formats, particularly electronically, we see that things have been copied and copied and copied. Chad has cleaned up the logo and taken away all the things from multiple copying and copying, so one of the big goals is to provide staff with those clean logos that look a lot sharper and you'll be prouder of. The third big area was that IT staff really owns the website. People pass them information at various points in time, but the website really belongs to the IT staff, as opposed to belonging to the people who are out in the departments. And we saw that as probably the biggest reason that the website is as it is, and that the website is not making you all proud and happy, and other people proud and happy. Talked about a communications person, a little bit different role, I think, than the decision you made earlier, but I do think that that's something, we're gonna put lots of things in place that I think will help everyone. But one of the things that folks still talked about was the lack of resources, if something terrific happens, whether they have the time and energy to stop and write a news release or whatever. But I think as we implement some of the other things, that's something that we can talk more about. So we're recommending the Urbana branded message and look, and I like to relate a lot of things to fashion, but I think in a message standpoint, what you want to do is continue to layer message after message after message that reinforces the core values, reinforces the things that differentiate Urbana. So all the things that you say aren't gonna be said in a single paragraph, that's gonna be over time, you're gonna hit those same goals and the same themes. The graphic identity showing Urbana's personality, again, it doesn't mean that everything needs to look identical and have every single, every color exactly the same. What we've tried to do is put together something that is memorable, that when people see it, they'll say, oh, that's the city of Urbana, and that's what you want, because you want, again, for the things to layer and create over time the image that you're looking for. So the goal is to be able to package, deliver those messages that differentiate Urbana. We put together some recommendations on how to do that. We have developed an overall message, a framework, that we will continue to refine as we move forward in some projects, and to provide tools that help folks maintain that. We have recommended and have installed a content management system for the website, and by virtue of the way that works, we are changing the ownership from just the IT department to the folks who are out in the departments who really own the information and know it best. We will, however, lock down a lot on the website. All of the design elements will be locked down, so while folks can go in and put in new content, and can make changes, can update their new information, can put in new events and all of that, there's certain things that they won't be able to change. So you'll continue to have the same kind of look and feel into the future. Exploting the communications person, I already hit on. The other thing we recommended in this evolved as we were going through, looking at the fact that decentralization was gonna cause us some issues, and unifying, and because the website was gonna change virtually the way departments look at the information on the website, a marketing and media relations committee. That committee has already started meeting. It has a representative from each department area. They are working together to talk about how to go about some of the website things we're talking about, and they're spending some time talking about media relations, media releases, how those are going, and also how they want to look. We have met a couple times to give them updates on what we're doing on these projects, and I think it will be a group that will be significant in pulling together the message and the look, as you have indicated you want to. Okay, on the website, we chose a content management system, went through a number of different choices, narrowed it down to about five different choices that we looked at in, I hope that Brandon and Charlie will agree in great detail, and debated them, finally decided that we were gonna go with Drupal. We were down to two, and one of the things that kind of made us move in the Drupal direction as opposed to the Plone direction, which was the other one in the mix, was that there were a number of people in the city, the UPTV project was gonna use Drupal, the library's likely to use Drupal. So I think the group felt in general that there would be some power in being able to have all those on one system. The basic framework is in place, and in a minute, I want to show you a backend page so you know what folks are going through as they develop these pages. But basically, Drupal is a giant database. So folks will have options every time they develop a page, put in some content into the system. They'll be able to choose, we know we have three major audiences, a major goal was to move to an audience functional kind of, what is it you want to do on the website, what is it you want to learn on the website, as opposed to, here are the departments in the city of Urbana, and these are the things each of those departments does, and which of these things, then taking people that way, this system is gonna be different. We have developed a number of different content types. As we go through the rest of the process on developing content and migrating it, for certain, we will develop several more. Specialized department, or specialized pages are being developed, boards and commissions, city council, we have the mechanics of those, how are they developed? You'll have a page for boards and commission, a board or commission, you'll have a page for the city council. Then there will be a mechanic that allows you to put in meeting pages, and attached to each meeting page, it will be the agenda, it will be the minutes, it will be video, it will be PDFs, all the things that you have. So as you see that board and commission page, you'll be able to go very quickly to all the meetings that that's had. The basic design's in place. Content development and migration are taking place as we speak, probably. For Bill in particular, and certainly, we agreed with this, it was important not to just migrate the content that is on the existing website. It's not targeted well to the particular audiences. In many cases, that was information that had been copied from budget and strategy documents and strategic planning workshops and whatever. So they, it really, much of the language does not speak directly to individual consumers, business folks who might be interested in developing. So it's not just moving the content at this point, it's really redeveloping it, using the designs and the overall look as a template. In addition, then, to continuing to evaluate things as we move forward, there may be a department that comes in and says, you have all these content types, and you have all of these mechanicals to move things from one place to another, that really doesn't work for my information. So we may have to go back to the Drupal list of different kinds of content and say, okay, let's add this one that fits. In addition, that will be training folks on how to update their own content, and we'll also be assigning, we as in all of the folks who are working on the project decide how to assign content ownership. Every page will have a content, or will have an owner, and every page will have a history of the last time it was updated. Our target go-live date is February 8th. You should have received in your packet a timetable of all the things that are going on. And I think the next thing I want to do is take a look
Give me your CMS.
Folks will be given log-on information and various kinds of permissions. This particular page has the permission of a super user, meaning that this person, Jason, the developer, can change anything he wants. He can create new mastheads, he can have a lot more flexibility than most other, than all other users will have. But if you look at the very top, you come up with a title, and I'd like to use news release as an example. So say we have a title, $10 billion gift to Urbana. The menu link title, then, would be, first of all, your content type would be a news release. One of the things that's gonna happen with a news release is that the following mechanical takes place. You develop all the information, the news release goes into the home probably of the department, but also will go in a news release feed. So on the homepage, you'll see when Chad shows the designs, that automatically will go in to the top of the list, and then the list, the older things will sink down. And there are a couple of exceptions to that. The parent item will be a news item. The weight can be changed to make it sticky, if you will. So if you change the weighting, if there's some news releases that you want to keep at the top, probably your $10 million gift would be a good one to remind people of again and again. That would stick at the top for some period of time. So because it's a database, you're actually filling in the fields as you go through this process, and you'll see the next thing is images, all pictures that you want to have on a given page, can be downloaded, uploaded, and folks can choose their own photos, but what they can't do is change the size. So again, that'll be an automatic kind of process that'll keep you with the same kind of quality and the same design that you have. You can add the body copy, and then there are places to add additional files. You'll look at the categories, the main audiences, and decide what those are, what department it's assigned to. So again, as you go through this particular page, you're filling in all the fields for the database on that particular item.
But like Edgar said, this was designed for a super user. So when you look at this
Right.
And look at all of these options, it won't be this daunting. So you would go under news release, you know, half of this list might go away because it's not applicable to, because it's not applicable to, no, let's see, hang on, I forgot that messed up, to that given user. You know, so if I, you know, click on news release, that might only include a title, an image, and body copy. and body copy, you know, with a designation of, you know, possibly what category that falls under. So, you know, this list looks crazy and difficult, but it only is going to take a couple of times doing it. It's sort of self edits, depending on what category you're selecting. Sorry, Ma.
I can do it.
Yes, please.
That really is a separate issue and a separate process. If you have a news release that's all ready to go out to the media, you will be able to essentially cut and paste and put that in here pretty easily where it says body, where that copy goes. Then you'd have to have the title and all of that. So for each of the content types that you have, it will tell you what you have to check, what you have to fill in. And presumably after you've done one or two or three news releases, it will be the same thing every single time after that.
Now, let's see what could happen. You could do the title, you know, any images, the body copy, whatever. But if you have the PDF of the actual news release, like the formal news release, you could put that in a file attachment too. So, you know, when somebody's looking at the news page, you know, they can read the synopsis if you want to in the body copy and then get the official news release right in the file. I mean, that all just depends on what the user wants to, wants to do. I mean, so it does have potential, certainly. The weights are only, it's only like a, like a one or a zero because there's only one item that's going to be sticky at the top at any given time. Oh, so when you're, that will help maybe when we get to the next page. But basically, it's the column of content. If it's sticky, that means it will always be at the top until you tell it not to be. So, you know, if I say something is sticky, it goes up here. The next news story goes right here and goes down. You know, if I remove its stickiness, then the next news story goes in and replaces it on top. Yeah.
And for news releases in general, I think one of the things we're hoping to do is probably have all of those come in in the HTML so that they all flow through the feed, which means that
Yeah, yeah.
If you have something that you've put a one weight on, it will be an important thing that'll stay at the top of the news release list, if you will. Unless you have that though, they'll all come in in chronological order. So the most recent thing that was sent out from the city of Urbana that was put on the website will be the top thing.
Nothing above it.
Correct. For some period of time. For events, which will be another thing that has a mechanical, for Sweet Corn Festival, you probably would have wanted that to stick at the top for the last several weeks. So, you know, it really is dependent on the situation. One of the things that's important about this website is that it is all customized to Urbana. So we certainly will make recommendations. Your IT department has obviously recommendations. Who can change what and what level of ownership or permissions they have is going to have to be determined. And again, we'll come up with recommendations, but the department heads probably will have different people who they will want to have different kinds of levels of permissions. So that's going to be dependent. But again, we'll have some guidelines, but ultimately the rules are rules that you all will need to make. Chad really gets to do the exciting part because he gets to share his work. He has worked both on the website designs and on the marketing design. So I'm going to pass these out so you can actually watch.
Skip ahead. Yeah. Okay, while Edgar's passing those out, I think we'll go ahead and move ahead. On the website designs, the first thing we will look at will be the landing page or homepage. Okay. So when you log on, you'll see a, it's a three-column format on the top. Can you guys see my cursor? I think you can. Can you see that okay? Okay, so, knock it down just to touch, let's make this machine run a little slow. All right, the main image right up here will rotate. It'll rotate while a user's on this page. It'll also be refreshed when, when somebody first comes into the site. So if they're in at 10:00 in the morning and they come on at 10:15, odds are they will see a different graphic. You'll see there's a three-column format on the landing. The latest and greatest will be over here on the large primary dominant left column, thinner column in the middle. And on the right, a secondary column on the landing page, we're filling it with upcoming events, recent updates, you know, any of those type of elements that are regularly updatable and like a little sub-menu. But the one thing about, the one thing about the navigation, when you land on the site, we are basically, you know, showing you three audiences. If you're not, if you're not looking at the content down below, which is going to be the latest, greatest and most up-to-date of any of the content on the site, you know, we're showing you residents, visitors or businesses. Who are you? You know, are you a, are you a resident? Are you a visitor? Are you a business? And from there on, we will tailor the site to your experience. We have felt and found that, you know, those three audiences pretty much cover everyone. And, you know, it's an easier way for them to logically navigate the site, you know, coming in as a user, we can better predict what they will be looking for. If I'm coming in as a resident, you know, I might be looking for something potentially different than I would be if I were a visitor or a business. Okay, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Related to the navigation.
Uh huh.
So if you wanted, the current site, you can see city council, you can see mayor.
Right. All of that stuff will be up at the top.
Would that be in the?
See way up at the top right there?
Where is that?
See right, departments, boards and commissions, staff directory login. There are some of the
It's not intuitively clear to me which, where council, for example.
Well, it doesn't say that yet. This is, this is the drawings versus the real actual HTML. And it's, we will determine, you know, together how many of, you know, latest stories, content, whether they're features, whether it's news, whatever, will fill up the left column. This just isn't navigating properly. At the bottom, there's always going to be a footer with additional links. These are going to be like, you know, room for city login, you know, for maps, for, for things that are, that we want on every page, but we don't, we don't want them to have a dominant, a dominant place. Now, when we look at things like quick links, most viewed, some of these, when we look at the quick links, they will be volume-driven, meaning, you know, if, if most people come in here looking at parking meters, you know, and we find that that's what the users are, I don't necessarily think that's the case, but, you know, that will be on the quick links thing. So realistically, the things that people are most looking for will be under the things that have quick links and most rarely available, just because we're able to track all that and see, see who's visiting and what they're looking at. So, okay, so let's take an example. Can you see like these, this little market of the square graphic, this little arts in the park graphic? These are things with this modular layout and with this column format, these are the things that, like Edgar was speaking of before, you could do a news feature on, on the Sweet Corn Festival, but we can also do special graphics, special hot links, things like that that fit in these columns. They actually enhance the layout. They don't detract from it. They provide a good break between, between content. And it's one of those things that with them changing regularly on a weekly, monthly basis, whatever, that a visitor will feel that the site is constantly fresh, constantly changing. You know, our news, our news features will be different. The upcoming events will constantly change. This content here will, you know, in theory, on the hope that people will take to it and it will change as well. And the updates will change. So if we're on this page and we click on the visitors, so I've decided, okay, I'm, as an audience, I'm a visitor, I want visitor information. That will take you to this page. You can see the main, the main masthead shrunk up, the audience. Sorry about that. I don't know why it's scrolling up and down like that. Okay. The, you'll see the, the audiences moved farther up on the page now because we've already determined who you are. You still need to be able to get back, but this is who you are. Now, you'll see the, under the visitors, the larger block right here, here will be the, the sub-menu that deals with all of the things related to a visitor link. So as a visitor audience, these are the things that the visitors can get to under that designation. This collage here, we see changing too, probably as a, just as one unit, but it will, you know, as you refresh the page, as you log on to the page, this will be different. This allows us to get many more things that visitors might want to come to see. It's going to get some, some varying on people, places, things, you know, we can have, you know, so that we're not focused on any one, any one element once we're within a visitor's. This is an element right here, the welcome to Urbana, that's a, an idea for, that would be the equivalent of a sticky. So on your first page, when you come into a visitor, you log on the visitor's page, this will be here. And this is our welcoming message that will be above any of the, you know, these are the stories and the things that are happening that a visitor might be interested in, whether it's the, you know, Sweet Corn Festival, current events, pretty much any of that type of content. Upcoming events on the right side, right here, this can change to be specifically to a visitor experience. So, you know, while we have upcoming events on the homepage, that, that's all the events. These are ones that are tailored mainly to a, to a visitor. And you can see we can extend the elements like arts in the park. They can be something completely different, but, you know, it's kind of nice to have them flow through. You'll see that the three-column format now, the main content column is in the center. The thinner column that on the homepage that was in the, in the center here is now moved over to the left. And then we maintain the upcoming events. We have meetings here, updates. Like Edgar was talking about before, when you're updating your content, inserting an image size, the CMS will predetermine that width, okay? So you can have a maximum width in this column of, I don't know what that is, 400 or something. You know, so the pictures can be nice, they can be large, you know, really make it, make it, make it a nice experience.
And one of the tools that we would provide to folks on the internet is a resources folder that will have all of the templates, will have photographs, will have logos and will have standards and, and rules. So that there will be, we will make it as easy as possible for folks to be able to come up with a lively-looking, great page. And we have some staff who are working on getting more photos, particularly of the photos this fall, and making that a priority.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes. And, and it will naturally do that. Yes. It's basically going through right then to say, okay, more people are looking for XYZ, so we will populate it with XYZ. And this will be a field that we can predetermine how many links we're going to, you know, allow. You know, at some point, they'll, they all become quick links if we allow them all, but to say if we want to limit it to five or 10 or however that happens to be, but yeah, they will. Okay, so, so say we're on visitors, we click on this Greek text here, it would take you to a single page featuring whatever that happened to be. And then it would basically accordion down to any things related to that, whatever the topic happened to be. I showed a picture of the alma mater. But again, here's another thing over here with the, the little modules that can plug in to various events or activities, or it can be pretty much anything. It just, you know, it's really nice it'll fall within the same style. You know, the copy, we're planning on, you know, down, once you're in a feature story, be able to have a section where the text, you know, if you really want to call out a paragraph or two or three sentences or something, you'll be able to designate that. That's what this, this gray, this green here is for. And then located on this, we're still kind of working out where this is, when you're in the CMS and writing the content, you'll be able to pick a related elements to say, maybe you're three day in a series of stories. You know, you will be able to reference the previous two here so people can go back and see the elements related to, to what they're looking at right there. And now, let's move on to, this is just one sample of what a department page could look like and does look like currently. Okay, so, so you see it sort of looks like the visitors because we've, you know, we're teaching the user what to see for the sub-heads and, and the content and where to look for their menu systems. Public Works, the images change based on whatever, whatever the department does, you know, we'll do a series of collages again that rotate in and out and become unique. Your Public Works department, we're talking about, this is the, kind of the concise statement about whatever that department is and what they do for, for the city and how that benefits you. The old one Edgar pointed out to me was written by, somehow it was found in a budget document on the current site. So it's really long, really dry, takes a while to get to what, okay, what, what does Public Works do? Let's, let's, let's get at it and see what they've, how they benefit the, a resident. And again, very similar style. This is all intentional because once the, the user, you know, learns where to look for things, where they look for menus, where they look for dynamic content and copy, you know, we want those things to be similar. The Public Works, we've used the same style, but instead of upcoming events, now it's street closings and it's the list of current activities. So the user experience, they're used to seeing content over here that, you know, populates and is active and live, but now in Public Works, we've taken that and made it, made it practical for them and for their content. Again, we have feature stories, related topics, you know, click on Arbor and that will take you to, you know, a detailed page. And here again, we see the Arbor list with the accordion fold and the things that relate to Arbor right there. You can always get back to other Public Works things. And once, like you saw in the previous step, we do have, we have the ability to get back. But, you know, right here, once we're in a specific thing, I'm, specific story and article, related links, this bottom part here will remain the same on the site, no matter if you're, it doesn't, it doesn't change given the audience, whether you're a business, visitor or, or citizen. Let's skip that a little bit. Any questions on the, on the, on the site itself? I mean, we can move forward, but I have other stuff. Yeah.
I would just like to make a strong case for getting photographs that reflect the entire city.
Yes.
When I look at materials today, I see West Urbana, I see parks and I see downtown, but I really think it's important to reflect the entire city, the diversity of the houses, the people, the places and the business areas. And I, and I hope this new website does that. Otherwise, it looks terrible.
Right. Well, and right now, realistically, what you see is, there's a good chunk of stock because of, you know, the lack of some of the images. So, you know, I mean, we picked ones that look, that were representational, but my goal would be to have this populated with actual photos, recognizable things, maybe not so much recognizable people because, you know, that's just a touchy thing. But, but certainly, I mean, all of this stuff will be made better by having identifiable, identifiable photography, certainly.
And you, again, you want people to recognize the landmarks.
Everywhere.
To understand what the neighborhoods, when you talk about the neighborhood feel, to understand what that means, the mix of things, the historic preservation, the clock tower.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with photography especially. It's important to get professional quality photography. Something off a digital camera won't do. And for these five, you know, images on this Public Works page, to have them represent the breadth of Urbana. So we sort of started talking about this before the meeting, but I wonder is, at this point, is the city's responsibility to get a freelance photographer to work from kind of a shot sheet that you provide to shoot the photos for the sections like for these five images and then you would process them so that when we go live in February, we have professionally processed images?
Yeah, I think on the masthead, certainly. Those are things that we would want to set up and organize and, you know, and make right, you know, the choices with the five or on the homepage with the rotating. I think as a group, we should decide which things are most important to shoot and then just sort of work on a priority list down.
Yeah.
You know, whether that's something that, you know, I'm not sure, whether that's a freelance photographer that, you know, we aren't just sort of work on a priority list down.
Yeah.
You know, whether that's something that, you know, I'm not sure, whether that's a freelance photographer that, you know, we are directing work with, or, you know, that could be the best case scenario.
Yeah, whatever works.
I was going to say, that really works well, because Chad has the ideas that I think are going to fit into the designs and the things that he's got here, and works well with a photographer then to say, okay, this is the look we're going for.
Yeah.
As opposed to just a, a list of shots that you may or may not come up with the same feel that you're looking for.
Well, yeah, because they need to be stylized, we want them to be cool, the cropping just right, I mean, there's a lot of things...
Strong photo direction will be important for consistency, and our city staff, I think, can help with sort of the shot sheet of like locations that would represent the diversity of Urbana, so that we get pictures from lots of places.
Well, and that's why, beyond the homepage, you know, I wanted to have these more collages, because I think that's, you know, it's important to show, you know, the breadth as opposed to, you know, the, the one image on the home, I think, is important because it's dominant, it shows you where you are, you know, it's another landmark to say, okay, I'm home. But once we get into the individual pages on the, you know, the businesses, or the residential, or, you know, those, those are the things that we're going to want, you know, a lot of options to do, certainly.
Yeah, so I guess I would just ask that you tell us, and, you know, be clear along the way, what you need us to do.
Yes.
If, if you need us to go get a, you know, get a freelance photographer to go out for two days and shoot these, to tell us, and, you know, and be specific about what you need from us, because it's important for those pieces to fit in, for this to come off well.
Right, well, and for us, it's one of those things too. There's some synergy here, the shots that we're taking for the website, you know, I would fully plan on using, you know, the brochures and literature, you know, so it's not like just a one-shot thing. And then also, that's what we're going to put, you know, in the gallery on the site, you know, that's accessible to, you know, the city people that are building brochures and doing things like that, that these, these photos need to, you know, be available to everyone, so we hope that people start to, you know, raise the quality of the imagery.
Something that comes to mind along those lines, I, I don't know if you're ready to go with shooting some pictures, if you've got some shots being taken already, but we're probably at the height of construction season for Public Works, for example. Trees are, you know, we're...
Good.
Trees are good, we're going into fall, so you've got to, you know, you're right on the cusp of the end of one season, beginning of another, farmers markets going full tilt, that sort of thing. So, it, it strikes me that if we're going to have this thing ready to go in February, we need to, we need to get a bunch of pictures right now, which means probably making some decisions, I don't know if we can make some decisions tonight, or, or what, but what do you, what do you got there, Brendan?
In February, if we take the pictures, that it might look like an appealing place to move, so we get all the plants...
That's this last one over here. But I'm sure we can look with, look at some, some freelance photographers that you guys regularly use and have available, and kind of, you know, work down from there, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing a book or two, and just sort of build it from there. Yes? Yes. Well, what, what we have, and I've talked to our web developer about this, I don't know if you've seen them on other sites, the lower and upper case, the, the As, you know, where you bump them and they all increase in size. We're looking at it probably a little smaller than it would be normal, but yes, that's something that, you know, it will be, it'll fit all the accessibility things, and... Like, like basically up here in the corner, there'd be a little, a little A and a larger A, and you can click on the larger, and the text size will increase until you're happy with it, that type of thing.
Back to photos, which is one of my pet areas. Number one, this community is full of phenomenal, I won't even call them amateur photographers, just really great photographers.
Right.
So, if there's a way to incorporate community participation in this site, providing photos would be one, and I see this pic of the day as being a great place to invite the, the community to send you photos.
That was sort of our, our little goal, you know, is to say, you know, submit your picture of the day, you know, you can, your name would be on it, the caveat is, we can use it. So, you know, it's just a way that we're kind of pulling in a greater...
Yeah, how, how soon can we start that, is, you know?
The pic of the day?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a great way to start getting some pictures.
Yeah, you know, and some of them, who knows, but, you know, others could be really, you know, really good, really good photos. Yeah, the whole thing... No, as Jason, no, 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 the, the page is smaller. Let's see if I go, you know, or...
Oh, you didn't mean that the type is smaller than the user most...
No, it's not, yeah, no, it's, no, 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 no. It's, I've got it down a little bit, just so we can see more of the page. So, really, I mean, that's, you know, what we have on the, on the, yes?
I'm, I'm really happy with the choice of Drupal. I've used it for, I don't know, maybe four years now in various things, and you can definitely set up templates that are easy to use, that, so that you don't have to have the PhD in order to actually plant a story, place a photo, and have it stay consistent with the look of the site, so.
Well, especially with us locking, locking down that, and building the template around, you know, we're building the site around the CMS where we set up the, you know, the rules and guidelines, so then it literally is a plug-and-play. It knows, you know, once we fill out a couple fields, it knows where to populate it and what to do, so, you know, I mean, we hope it's going to be, you know, really robust, error-free, people aren't going to worry about breaking it, because we want them to explore, but at the same point, you know, it, we will make it consistent, there will, there are certain things that just won't change.
But, at, at the same time, because Drupal is such a modular system, if the, there are ideas for improvement that come in a year from now, or if we want five things in a different order, we're not locked in for good.
Right.
It's actually fairly easy to, to swap the...
Right, plug, plug us out, pull that out. And that's one of the things where we're talking about the various departments, and what their needs might be. You know, I mean, you know, somebody might have a, a real custom need, and, you know, we talk about that, decide what that is, and plug that in, so, you know, I mean, kind of everyone gets what they want. That's all on the, yeah, sorry, Brendan.
Brendan?
Yeah, one last quick website question. Like you said, the current content isn't good enough to just migrate straight into the new site. Are you all doing some of the copywriting to write good targeted text for some of these key landing pages like Public Works? Or which, which of that rewriting falls to us and to departments here?
The only areas that we have agreement to write the introductory copy are on the, the big three, if you will, the intros, and, and we can talk about that as time goes on. I think that the departments, if you pull up the, the previous, if you look at your department page, they have to summarize what they do in a, a pretty little area, and I think that that will encourage and help folks to be able to do that, and to think in terms of, okay, for this audience, what is it that we do that they need?
Great, I think writing is definitely key, and actually, the new staff person that we added tonight is somebody who has writing experience. So, there's a number of people who, yeah, quite, quite a bit of writing experience, there's a number of people who obviously are going to participate in the writing, and, and again, this is something, yeah, you should just be clear to, clear to our staff about what the writing duties are, and we all want this to happen, I know from the mayor and all of us, so we want to help people to find the time to do the writing, and to follow your lead on writing succinctly and writing good targeted text.
We will put together and work with Tom and Libby and Lisa again on what we want to do for photography, put together a proposal for that, on how we can do it, and, and when, and try to get it accomplished as quickly as possible. Charlie?
Yeah, I've got to say, you know, this is, it's real exciting to finally be at this stage of the game, and some, you know...
Weena?
I, I love the choice of colors, the maroon combined with the green, and the other choices really keeps, keeps, you've maintained the continuity of the image we've got from the last 20 years, like you say, up front in the marketing materials. Good, good mix of, of, of the marketing in with the website, which I think is the, is the, 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 the modern, current way to, to do things. Going back to the marketing materials, you have, you've presented a timeline for the, for the website, did I miss the timeline for the, for the marketing materials, and when we'll be seeing some of that?
We're going to show you some of that right now.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, that will be available on the site when the site launches, but then also, we can have those materials available, the templates available ahead of time, you know, for different departments to be able to...
Probably on the Intranet.
Yeah, on the Intranet, to be able to build up and ramp on.
Okay.
It's not necessarily right on this site, but, you know, if you log in and everything, you can get access to, you know, logos and templates and all of that.
Okay, so they're basically moving sort of simultaneously then?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yep. Any other questions on the site? We can always come back. Okay. Well, the color palette. So, I don't know how the screen shows it, but, you know, Urbana Maroon, Urbana Green, and some other complementary colors, I think, that actually help liven the thing up a little bit. Give us, give us a few more options on printed pieces, the site, other things, I think it just opens up, opens up a lot, a little more lively. And then the, these are some brochure templates. What we're looking at here are the covers. We see these being designed in Word, and in Publisher, and the ability to download them, download the templates, or save as to your desktop. Some of them can become, can come preloaded with images, others, they will just be image boxes that you can pick from the gallery, and, and choose what you want in there. You know, depending on, depending on use, we have quite a few different styles that people will be able to pick from.
Versus what's on screen here, I'm, that's, that's browner, deeper green, what we're seeing is more, I guess, yeah, what we're seeing on the screens here and up...
I would say that that screen up there probably isn't calibrated 100%. I'm not quite sure what you're looking at, but it's the, like, when you think of the Urbana Maroon, that's what it is.
Maroon, okay, which probably our screens...
The Urbana Red. I, yeah, no, that's all right. So, you know, you'll see that people, they don't have specific images for their brochure. You know, we will have some that are pre-populated with things, if people have their own images, we can, you know, they can select those boxes and insert wherever they want. The text fields, they can highlight, type in their own text, you know, one of those things, does that look about right?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to see what colors you're seeing.
Does that look about right? That, that to me is too dark, but, you know, that's more what we're seeing, it's, but it will, it's the, it's the... More like that. But it's the PMS of the one that, you know, we had before.
We, we will start using PMS colors.
Yeah.
Because no two pieces right now look the same.
Well, and there's, there's a big problem, because a lot of the image assets in the logos, I found, we were able to get AVT image that did have a, a PMS, but a lot of the materials, when we were doing the materials evaluations, you know, you could tell we're placed JPGs, placed CPS files, you know, some of them pixelated, you know, so there's just a couple generations that, you know, we're not quite sure where they grabbed this one from, was this a scan of something else? So, all of that will be done, we'll clean up, we'll clean up all of that. Couple more layouts, you see the ones previous, multiple images, this one's a more simplified layout, some departments don't have a lot of images, they don't want a lot of them on the cover, it's a more simplified layout, these designs also work well in black and white. There's going to be a lot more of these for the templates, you know, the covers will vary, like Edgar said, there's some level of consistency that they'll all have, but, you know, we want enough personality so that, you know, it doesn't feel like, you know, we go in, change the name, change an image, throw it back out there, somebody goes, well, I just, I just received this brochure. You know, I mean, there needs to be enough, enough variety that a department has the freedom to pick, so they don't get tired of the same style. And what we're looking at is just the covers, you know, some of these will be, you know, tri panels, some might be parallel gate folds, who knows what, but we want to just have some variety, say, okay, you know, here's a eight and a half by 11 brochure folded down to be a number 10. Here's a eight and a half by 14, parallel folded to be a number 10 size, you know, we can have some slightly bigger ones. But, on other things, like, like this was just our, our one stab at some of the market at the square stuff, there are certain things that aren't going to qualify, or wouldn't work with a template structure, you know, that, that should be more customized, that ought to be, you know, really designed, and I know, Brendan, we spoke about this a few minutes before the meeting, that, you know, some elements, I mean, we, we pick the, you know, the big high-profile ones, the ones that have the most impact, and those, those should be designed. I mean, you know, these templates aren't an end-all, be-all to everything else, I mean, we're, we don't want to compromise, you know, aesthetics and message, just to make them available in Publisher and Word. So, while that works for a lot of projects, some of them is just not going to cut it, so we want to make sure that, you know, I mean, we make that upfront about the templates, like, hey, you know, these work for most, but if you really think, you know, this is going to be a bigger deal, or this piece is, you know, you're spending quite a bit on printing, there's no point in having it designed in Publisher, you know, when it just, it just doesn't work. Another look, here's, here's where we've taken the color palette, livened it up a little bit, this is an, like, you know, potential for an economic development folder or brochure, you can see it retains the other colors, the, the style still fits, it still works with everything, but it gives a, a livened up, and it kind of gives an economic development its own, its own personality and character. And, you know, we can do that for different departments as, as need be. And then, thank you. If there's any other questions, I can always roll back, or...
Are you going to suggest specific color palettes for departments, or is that something that you'll be interested in?
I, I think, I think we would be better off, and I think the departments would be better off long-term, with the potential to mix and match some. If we lock one down in a certain color, they do three brochures in it, they're tired of it. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean the public's seen them at all, but we don't want, you know, them to feel like they're painted in a corner, or boxed in, or, you know, in their own department, we want to be able to let them have a little bit of expression and individuality with the pieces. They'll all still be consistent, but I think the style, we should, we should leave that a little, a little more open.
I like the color palette, please, and red stuff.
Yeah.
It's meant to, to bring in a little smothering...
They certainly work to enhance, yeah. Thank you.
I really like how they believe global icons, I thought that was more interesting.
Yes, yes, and it's, it's freed us up to a lot of things, and that's something we really didn't talk about.
They modernized it, they get it, and they've got really excellent color palettes.
Yeah.
And, and I really appreciate the way they're, and sharp, and...
Yeah.
After multiple, or not many, where you can reduce, kind of, the object, and...
Right.
Where the original might be, that had a little...
Well, the original probably is on pen and ink somewhere still, you know, and, and there's a couple variations, the one that I was working from, you could tell it had been live traced at some point, and, you know, some of the curves were actually a series of straight lines, and, you know, when you get in at 800%, you can tell, and, you know, in some of these applications, if you're just saving out a JPG to put in a brochure, you might not know, but, you know, for our applications, we're going to want it, we're going to want it crisp and tight, and that version will be available to everyone, so there will be no more excuses to use the old ones.
It's really interesting how, how just by, by taking, getting out of box and changing it, it works in a way that's really modernized.
Yes.
Without actually...
Yeah.
I really bought that.
Thank you. It, it made everything else much easier to work with. You know, I think being able to separate those elements and remove that started to, to make a big difference, and certainly modernized it.
Any other comments? I would just like to say, I love the Urbana vision that's written on page five, Charlie and I were talking about it before the meeting, and I would hope that that vision statement can appear somewhere on the website.
We'll have to get a content guide for that.
Okay. It's in page five of our packet.
Oh, from here, I know it.
Okay.
I, I'd like to say, I prefer that statement over the one you put up, actually.
Thank you, also, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
It was fun to work on, so, appreciate it.
It's beautiful. Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance number 2009-08-095, an ordinance vacating a portion of Sycamore Street, north of Park Street, Public Works.
A couple Mondays ago, we had a public hearing to see if there were any comments on Sycamore Street and the partial vacation of it. There was one person that did speak against the vacation, I... I, um, did contact the Armory to find out if there were any concerns with respect to the vacation, and, um, they did not indicate that there would be. So, the petitioner is the adjacent, immediately adjacent property owner to the site, and, um, at this point, I'm here to answer any questions.
I move that we send it to council and recommend approval.
Second.
Moved by Brandon, second by Stevenson, um, this be sent to council for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next we have, shall we just take the next ordinance and get that one out of the way? It's out of order. Ordinance number 2009-08-096, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Johnson Avenue, Hollywood Alley, Glover Avenue.
All three of these are recent Traffic Commission, uh, recommendations. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them, but, uh, I think the memo speaks to the basic reasons for the recommendations.
Heather?
I would move that we send this to council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Heather, and I don't know who's second. Charlie? Second by Charlie, this be sent to council for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, next up is the discussion of the private sanitary sewer policy.
Uh, thank you. I did ask Brad Bennett to join us this evening. He is, among the many hats he wears, uh, is involved heavily with our sanitary sewer maintenance repair, uh, expansion, extension programs, and we felt important to come to you this evening to talk about, um, a lingering issue that I've been aware of the years I've been here, and they come up every so often, maybe once or twice a year. But, um, Brad and, and his staff recently, uh, did a good job identifying an exhibit, uh, attached to this memo, as to, just to give you a flavor of probably how many properties in Urbana have a sanitary, a private sanitary sewer that have two or more households connect to a, a single private sewer. And basically, as the story is told in the memo, but we'll receive a phone call of a problem, and Brad and, and maybe our sewer crews will go out to investigate, and typically you'll have a, a defect, um, roots, collapsed pipe, blockage, a variety of things could happen, and it impacts, uh, at least one property, sometimes more than one property, and lo and behold, we find out that, um, there's multiple folks' properties tied to a single private service line or a sewer. And it, it causes problems, especially when you get two or more people trying to decide, well, who's going to pay for what? If two out of three households don't have a problem and one household does, they typically get stuck with the multi-thousand dollar repair, and the other two, even though they're tied in that same sewer, you know, don't pay, or it, we kind of get in the middle of things, and it's, it's just very problematic. So, um, a public sewer, pretty much by definition, is a pipe that carries, you know, waste from a property of two or more residences. That's pretty much what a public sanitary sewer is. But the way the city in its early years was developed and where public sewers were installed, in many cases, every other block, we can speculate as to why. We didn't do any exhaustive research to find out why, but the bottom line is, is that because a public sanitary sewer was not installed in every single lot or, or every, uh, street, we have these situations where we have two, three, four properties tied into a sewer, private sewer, that eventually through side yards, backyards, what have you, or down a street, tie into a, what we would call a public sanitary sewer. So, what we thought we would do is, uh, suggest a way to maybe help alleviate these problems. Many times, um, we are, uh, we try to encourage the private sewer to become public, but to become public, you know, to protect our interests, the sewer pipe, number one, has to be a minimum diameter of, of typically six inches, because that's the diameter we need for our equipment to get in and inspect and clean and repair. Number two, we have to have access to it, you know, and access is manholes, in which we have throughout the city in our public sewer system. So, um, usually those aren't available. At best, there might be a cleanout, which is a small diameter, you know, four or six-inch pipe, but not something we can really stick equipment in or send someone down to, you know, diagnose what the problem is. So, to include, you know, two sets of manholes to do the repair, you're into 10, $15,000 repair. And if we want to upgrade that sewer pipe that's private to become a public sewer, which is costly, and then when you have multiple property owners involved, um, it can get sometimes contentious as to who's going to pay, if anybody wants to pay at all. So, a suggestion we have for your, um, comments, feedback question is, maybe we should look at, in these instances where there are two or more properties on a private sanitary sewer, that when they become problematic to us, that we, uh, use sewer benefit tax money that everybody does pay in the city, and use, uh, a budget amount each year to try to make these repairs, install these manholes, and then in our maps, in our GIF system, we would then deem them to become public. We would so notify those property owners that from point A to B, which is typically from manhole to manhole, that would be now a public line, and it'd be clearly delineated or defined from the point A on with a private sewer lateral. By ordinance, by city practice and policy, private sewer laterals are 100% homeowner responsibility. And come up with something like that. We, some questions were, well, boy, won't this take a long time to convert all these identified locations to public sewers? And the answer is, to some degree, it could be. It could be several decades, although it's not every day that we have problems either, but as we can anticipate, the one or two or maybe three a year that we do get involved with, we could slowly but surely, um, convert those to public sanitary sewers, and, and over a period of time, uh, we could take care of that. I, we didn't want to make this a costly program and proactively go out and do all 200 locations in a matter of 10 years, because that would have a adverse impact on the sewer benefit budget that we use, and we do need monies to do all the other programs that Brad and his staff do. But we felt that at least in the initial years, this would be a reasonable amount and not have to raise the rates any higher than we already are raising the same or benefit tax rate. Before I stop, Brad, do you have anything more to add or any questions?
I think you covered things pretty completely. I mean, in the, the five years I've been here, I think I've only dealt with, with maybe two, uh, issues. Like I said, usually it's not a problem unless there's a, a backup occurring. As long as the sewer functions, um, it's not a problem for the multiple. It's just when you have a, a backup issue that it becomes a kind of an urgent, critical matter.
Now, to clarify one thing, not too many months ago, council did pass an ordinance that did cost share with property owners on a lateral now, the pipe that goes from the house to the public sewer, in that in the event that the repair was in the right-of-way under pavement, okay, that typically, well, not typically, that is an extraordinary cost. To help defray those costs, we did agree to a 50% cost share in that situation. So, I don't want to confuse that scenario, which is one property, one lot, one house, one sewer lateral, which is all private, to this, which is multiple properties on a line that, again, by our definition, a public sewer is typically a sewer that conveys waste for two or more properties.
Brandon?
Yeah, thanks, Bill and Brad, for bringing this forward. I support the proposed alternative one. I just had two questions about it. First, can we afford the $25,000 a year from our sewer benefit tax without, without raising the tax or taking away from other projects?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's going to erode a little bit of other maintenance-type work, but in the whole scheme of things, we've talked about it, and from a staff perspective, this isn't going to, uh, bump up any more than our sewer benefit tax increases each year, which are typically tied into inflation or what have you.
Okay.
Or in more recent years, tied into a little bit of monies we need for the East Urbana Interceptor, which is a whole nother
Yeah.
story now, so to pay that debt service. So, can you answer your question? No.
Okay.
Charlie's in the mirror.
Yeah, of course, this, this affects the older parts of the community, I think, a little more than the newer. You can see from the map. Actually, I was surprised at how many there were, um, and, uh, I know some of them, some of them are problematic. There's one, one in particular, that, you know, alternative one will solve a problem that has been recurring for the, uh, last five years that I've been on the council. This has been a, an ongoing request, you know, what are you going to do about, uh, the sewer? And across, you know, what was interesting is that across the street from this sewer was an identical line that is owned by the city, except that it had a manhole versus a cleanout, and that was the, the single difference between the two sides of the street. Built at the same time, the whole bit, the city assumed, um, ownership of one side, but not the other at some point. Uh, but, uh, but clearly there was a manhole, uh, installed on the other side of the street as per city, uh, requirements. I don't know if that happened in the past. So, to me, uh, if we can do this bit by bit, you know, we solve a, a long-term, what, what is going to be a long-term issue, um, and so I, I, I really like alternative one now that I understand it.
So, we won't have to do fundraising and sell sewer plaques?
No, well, no, we're not great into the fundraising part, that's it.
Bill? I, I noticed that there weren't a whole lot in Ward Three. Is that because back in the day, they had alleys with those 16-inch main sewer things in them?
If there's lots that aren't shown on this street, that means those lots are served, uh, by a public sewer adjacent to or immediately, uh, in front or behind that property. You know, the, the, all the, all the other lots are served by public sewer. So, that's the good news.
Yeah. But I was thinking back in, these lots down here, the way I see them structured, I don't see an alleyway or something like that.
Yeah, right, there's nothing west to back.
Back in the day, they had an alley behind, uh, the properties, and usually went out the back rather than out the front.
There's no rhyme or reason. I mean, seriously, there just isn't, you know, there's...
Dennis?
Bill, can you tell me a little bit about, um, uh, our manholes? And, you know, that's be the access down into repairing sewers. Do we have one at every street intersection? You said that, uh, the definition of a, of a public sewer would be basically between, a line between two different manholes, it'd be like an access situation, but if there's not manholes in certain areas, does that mean that they have to be installed before they become a public property? And if they're installed, um, do they just go down to an interception point between various lines? Or, I mean, they're not, these, these manholes don't lead to large underground, um, workspaces, do they, in particular? What's the story on that?
I, I can take that.
Look, Brad.
You know, typically for new sewer construction, we'll put a manhole, you know, basically at any change in direction, um, any change in pipe size, and then, you know, typically intersection of pipes, or if you have kind of the, the start or dead end of a pipe. I mean, really, a manhole is just allowing you to get your equipment in to, to clean it, and, um, you know, some of our new technologies, we can do the cure-in-place lining and do rehab, you know, through the manhole. So, basically, it's just an access point. They're usually no more than four foot in diameter. Um, so you have to not be afraid of confined spaces to go down and work in one of them. They're not very large work areas, but, um, you know, in the older section of town, we do have sewers that don't have manholes on it, and it is a access problem. Every year, we probably go and, I'd say, install at least a dozen, you know, new manholes to give our crews access so they can get in there and do their maintenance and keep the pipes open and running. So, um, you know, it's, it was really arbitrary how they designated what was public and what was private. I mean, you could look at some of our public lines and say, well, like Charlie mentioned, there isn't much difference between them and a private. Right now, we have pretty, you know, stringent requirements. If you're a new subdivision, you know, you've got to have manholes based on what our city code is. We go in and we televise the sewer after a contractor installs it to make sure there's no breaks, you know, the city's not assuming any liability on, um, infrastructure repairs that we'd have to make in new subdivisions. So, um, you know, we have real tight standards now, but, you know, back, you know, previously from maybe the end of World War II up to the, the 80s, the standards were, were not quite as, as strict. And actually, I think in 88, we adopted the ordinance that required every lot to have its own private, uh, sanitary sewer lateral. So, that's why you don't see it in any of the new subdivisions, is because actually by city code, it's, it's prohibited. But, you know, prior to that, um, you know, it wasn't allowed, and it's no fault of the, the property owners, um, you know, that, that, that they have a private sanitary sewer.
Charlie?
That almost explains my, my question here. I, I see in a few places, there are single, there's single properties that are, that are marked here. So, I mean, what, what constitutes a private line? Say, you know, you look at 205, um, there in the upper left-hand corner. And, you know, what, why is that, if it's just serving the one property, how is it a private sanitary line?
And some of those might go away. And this is kind of a preliminary list, just based on mapping, and actually, we, we will have a lot of field work to go out in the field and identify where these private sanitary sewers are run and which properties they exactly serve. You know, for example, the one on California, I mean, we really had no idea how many houses were actually served by it until we started getting in and televising and talking to some of the residents, you know, based on previous sewer repairs. You know, they were able to identify that they were indeed hooked up to that pipe. So, I mean, this is just kind of a preliminary list, and, you know, that's one of the reasons too, why we couldn't go out in a short period of time and fix all these, because we'll have a lot of televising and die testing that we have to do to, to verify, because, you know, on our maps, we don't show any sewer pipes for, for a lot of these areas, and, you know, that's one of the first things we're going to have to do, is go in and figure out exactly where the pipes are, because they don't show up on any of our, our public sewer maps.
Brandon?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to proceed creating the program proposed in alternative one.
Second.
Moved by Brandon Bowersock, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And last item on the agenda is an update on the Zipcar.
Um, there is a memo in the packet, and I'm here to try to answer any questions, but I think, uh, the bottom line is, the program is gaining momentum. There's over 300 members. Our, uh, exposure, our share, if you will, uh, has diminished from the first quarter to the second quarter. We have a new school year starting, and we're anticipating more members signing on, and, so far, the numbers into this quarter, although it's early into this third quarter, are, are looking promising, so, um, I just thought it was important to let you all know, um, that this, this program has taken off pretty well, that there's a variety of advertising, uh, going on, and, uh, certainly with the new city website, that would be, uh, another way to continue to advertise, uh, this in other, other ways. So, uh, this is just kind of a status.
Brandon?
Yeah, this is great news. My only question is, after our revenue guarantee expires, is the Zipcar company under any obligation to remain operating the six cars in our community? I guess they've met their 300 members, so maybe it's a financial plus for them to stay, but will they stay and are they obligated to stay?
I can't answer the obligated part, but I know that they're very encouraged by what's occurring, and what we're hearing preliminarily is, is that it's just a matter of time before probably more cars will come in where we're not obligated financially, because, um, there are so many members, such good use, good revenue coming into them, and so I, I don't think we're going to see them going away, but I can't, I can't respond to the obligated part.
Any other questions? Charlie?
Yeah, and in the conversations I've had, the, the, the next two are likely to be, you know, in the Cranert Center area, um, so, you know, in the center of all the students and, and near the West Urbana neighborhood. So, I know I've seen, I've seen the one over here, and I've seen one or two of the Lincoln Square ones. I've been out there when both cars are gone, so that's good to see. I've been out there when both cars are gone, so that's good to see.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just would like to say that I followed one across Urbana yesterday as I was during my lunch hour, and it was just great to see one being used.
Well, with no further business before the council, we stand adjourned.